And he had a Range Rover with dual axes.
Well, it's not under.
Corner back to.
It's seven o'clock and I call the meeting to order. Roll call. Sarah here, Andrea here, Eric.
Yeah.
Jay.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Nancy here. Okay, upcoming legislation, this is regarding ordinance twenty twenty four seventeen. Want to discuss this a little more? Anything to add now?
Nothing to add on top of the discussions that we had. Don't know that the applicant was all that happy about it. This is where we are at. I think the legislation speaks for itself. If anyone has questions. Is everyone familiar with the location and what we're gonna do there?
Yep.
Kinda talked about it. I think it fits.
So will they have to? Obviously, it's something to do with First Street down there. It's First Street, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to make that somewhat of a two-way, which is kind of. Makes it as you're coming down harsh. Because, you know, there's, it's such a, right now, it's such a strong curve, and I've got the pole there. I mean, I think the pole would have to be moved to widen the road. But I know there's been many times people have gone in the wrong way and I.
Yeah, this isn't the one that we passed legislation on to move.
No, that was the other street, right?
No, that was the other, other end.
So i- if we're going to do that, we will have to pass legislation. Take the street from one way to two way.
It's actually gonna widen, isn't it?
It's gonna have to be widened, but that pole is right there on the end and I.
Who owns the pole? Is it a O D pole? Is it A P pole?
Yes.
I, I'm not sure what it is.
I asked you questions. Can't say yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, no, it's south, it's south.
Is it South Central Park?
It's South Central Park.
Yeah.
But it's, and it's, and it's, it's there at the, the corner of the property, but. They have ten foot right away on either side, right?
Yeah.
So they can move it.
So do we have to, if we allow, just if we say that we'll accept it?
Right.
Later, do we have to make sure they do all the roadwork? Or as long as they fit the MFA, they can build no matter what? I just wanna make sure I'm understanding the process.
This is strictly just a rezoning, and there's nothing in here that addresses doing any roadwork.
That's what I mean. So if we say this, I know in the past, Mary, you said, well, as long as they meet the code, there's nothing we can say if it's just. So I don't wanna vote to go with this and then say.
That right now, we don't have any other second, secondary deals or no agreements or anything. This is strictly, they've walked in and wanna rezone.
So.
Can you add a caveat to it?
That becomes a bill question there.
I mean.
I don't know if you can on rezoning, can you?
Not on the rezoning portion, you can't. Condition rezoning on anything. I think you can make them aware that if they wish to rezone it, you believe they're going to have to widen the road to a two-way street. Whether the village is gonna pay for that or whether the developer is gonna pay for that, that'd probably be a make or break point for the developer and it'd better for him to know sooner rather than later.
I think we, when they came in and presented, we had, Ross, I believe, said, you know, we're gonna do something with that road.
Yeah.
And they said that's no problem, but I just.
Was, was there no problem just because he owns the land?
Right.
On one side of the road, so he could give up a little bit of land or widen it? Was he thinking just, okay, I'll give up a little bit of land, not a problem?
Right.
But I don't know that any prices, I know no prices have been gotten.
No, no.
Far as blacktop and everything.
That we have to address that then.
And we already, I won't, I won't say, I won't say we have a price in this, but we already have a, a history of, you know, we, we had to have a certain roadway and a certain easement for Walker Point Phase Four. And it became necessary that they actually bought the property next to them in order to have enough width and then to make an appropriate driveway.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it's not like this is, this is unbroken soil. It's a.
But we had, with that, though, we had to develop, since it was a, what, a P U D, P R D?
P R D.
So we had development standards texts. It was part of the rezoning.
Yeah, it became a, yes, it did.
And with this, there is no, it's not a P R D, it's a flat rezoning, so there's no development standards text with this.
As long as he meets MFA, he could do whatever. Is that, is that how I understand it, Bill?
He has zoning to put the apartments in. That doesn't mean that he doesn't have to come back with his plans, and his plans are going to require parking. Egress. Ingress and egress. Staying within the setback lines, all of those things that he still has to do to get his plans approved. This is just, can I rezone this so I can put residential?
So.
You can, but you, you may need to put new road in. He's already talked about plumbing and electric having to go in. And all of those things are gonna go into whether this makes financial sense to him.
So the answer is, we have another step to address those if we approve this.
When he comes in with his plan, if he doesn't have sufficient means of ingress egress.
But would, could he say that he has sufficient ingress and egress? I mean, he's, he's, he's got whole, the whole frontage is blacktop onto the street.
Right.
And there was a fire department there for years and they, so can he say, I got that?
He certainly could argue that.
I've got that part covered, and you're talking a street that my building doesn't sit on. My building's on harsh and you're talking another street completely.
That's why I.
That's why I, that's why I, I don't. You see what I'm saying?
I hear what you're saying.
I don't see that we have, I don't see that we have teeth to go back and tell him he's gotta.
No, I, I just, I'm, I'm still, I guess, if anything else, I'm a little bit. I don't wanna say frustrated, that's not a good word, cause it's not, it's not my deal. But for for a piece of property to be purchased without knowing what you can do with it. It's a little bit, I don't say naive, but. He did it for investment purposes. He's trying to figure out. But it's, you know, it's a resident, it's in a residential area. I know. I get it. But I would make your concerns known at the second reading. Yeah. You know, cause I, I believe that what I'm hearing is, you're not voting on it tonight, but your approval or disapproval at the third reading is gonna be contingent on, is there going to be a road access issue later on? That you're gonna try and stick the village with, or are you willing to take that on as part of your redevelopment of this property?
They'd said that, well, his representative said in that meeting that they knew they would have to do something with the street, but if we don't have.
Bruce said that, or did?
Yeah, Bruce did. But, I mean, my concern is, just like, like Alan, where this is for MFA, we're only talking about the point seven, eight acres. So what legal ground will we have to enforce that if we approve this to MFA? That, that everything.
You don't have any building plans. You don't know if you're gonna approve of the building plan.
Do we even know if he wants it to be two-way or if he just would be okay with residents who live there going back?
Well, that would be on us. That, that's what, it's us to make it two-way.
And I think the residents are upset about that, cause then with all the traffic going.
Well, it only needs two ways to his property.
Right, for what I'm saying, just if we made it to one way coming out.
Right, but I'm saying then those people who live back there would just go the other road, the little second street around Harsh Alley to get there and then go out the way they're supposed to.
I mean, how'd the firemen get in and out for all those years?
They made it to, they, they.
Legally.
There was a sign.
It was emergency vehicles only. They could go that way.
An exception in the code for. Yes.
It wasn't always that way. They used to come down. You guys stayed there. And then go around.
But they couldn't make that turn anymore.
And they put a sign up saying it was two-way emergency vehicles only. So the guys working were still supposed to come in Second Street and go down.
And that didn't happen.
Like I said, supposed to come in that way, so it's.
I think regardless of what he puts in, whether it's MFA or whether it's commercial, you're still gonna be stuck with the same question as council, and that is, what is going to be the means of ingress and egress?
Yes, that's how I see it.
Cause he only has two options. Multifamily and res- and, um, commercial.
Can we get that information upfront before we vote on this thing, before the second, third reading?
Only if, I don't think that they'd be willing to do the engineering stuff before they know it's gonna approve.
Are we able to stick an agreement?
You can have a pre-development agreement. If you want.
Or I guess it'd be a pre, a pre rezoning agreement?
Is that what, is that what we did with Addison? I mean, it's kinda the same thing with Addison, just on a smaller scale?
It's, the difference with Addison is it's a P U D and there's a development standards text involved with all that stuff. This here is just strictly rezoning and there's no development standards text.
Right. I think you're just, you're making.
All this would be put in development standards texts, and we don't have that. This is just a flat rezoning.
Right.
I, I mean, do they have somebody here? That, that we could ask if we're wasting time discussing this?
Well, we're only up for a second reading. We could certainly ask Bruce at the second reading. And then we can ask the owner. Are you aware that you're going to need to put money in towards widening this road?
Could we ask them to sign, like, like, we ask them to sign an agreement that if it passes, they agree to these standards, or is that not gonna hold up if they challenge it?
Be in the minutes.
Alan, do they have to present a major site plan for this, or would it be more like a zoning application?
No, this would, they'd just come in with a zoning application.
Just a zoning application.
Yes, that's why I'm saying there's no other. I don't see another vote coming up to council.
It's the only reason I brought it up.
No, it's, it's a valid point, and, and I think that you need to raise it with them and, and see what their plans are. Because it's evident to me as an independent third party that without a two-way street, you're not going to approve the development of this site.
But if we approve this, then we can't stop it because it doesn't have a two-way street. We're, that's what I guess.
Well, it's not.
Street with.
Yeah, it's not, it's not stopping, and it's a matter of for public safety, you're going to have to have it, and it's the village willing to pay for, you know, the widening of the street, taking of the easements, and, uh, you know, the actual engineering dedication.
Okay, well, I guess we'll ask it at the meeting and.
And it's just for four units, right?
Yeah, four.
We took it down from.
Eight, there's seven or eight.
Seven to four.
Because with the variance.
And there is one more upcoming resolution, just to let you know, it didn't get on here. Wendy, we've got one here where she had to move some money and it'll be just a ratification.
Oh, okay.
She, in fact, she've already moved it or probably for, probably for the pay for the council.
The brick struck.
It was for some pay, but it wasn't for council.
Riddle of the brick struck. Point of order, Mayor, what about what Scott sent you? Are we gonna need a resolution on that at the next meeting? For you to be able to enter into that agreement with Skanel and.
With Skanel and them, I don't know, cause I got another e- that email I was reading this afternoon looked like, okay, maybe it isn't official yet.
That's just what Joanne, the attorney for Skanel, sent.
I, I took that, that Scott was wanting to review it some more before he.
Yeah, it's just he's out of.
And he's out until. I, if Scott wants to review it before we do it, I'd rather wait on Scott to say, okay, and just push it back till February meeting, we can do something with them.
That works. And just so everyone knows what we're talking about, it's just a dedication of Lot Nines.
Yep.
Infrastructure between Skanel and Canova and the end user, and, uh, they've done it in a really odd way. They, they just here, take this, here, take this, and now they're trying to clean it up at the end. But Joanne knows what she's doing, so.
In fact, council's already passed the first version of that. It came back, and when it came back, that's when I sent Scott a thing. It's like, hey, wait a minute, we've, we proved this back in September. Oh, well, it's changed. So.
How much will it change? Well, we'll see.
Yeah, I'm not sure what all involved or whatever, and that's when I asked him, I said, I'm not gonna look at this thing page by page and try to figure it out. So.
It's, it's tying up loose ends on what's been dedicated and what you have to be dedicated.
Okay, the next thing that we need to do is employee wages discussion. Wendy, how do you guys wanna stay in here during this or do you wanna?
Or do you wanna go out there and listen to?
Yeah.
It's kind of uncomfortable sometimes, so.
Do you want an explanation of my sheet or not, or?
Yes, please.
I, what I put on there basically was a recommendation, which I'm kinda required to do. There's my recommendation. The, you'll notice I cut everything back. I would suggest we go back to just still using three, three steps or starting pay as step one, step two, and top pay, and do raises once a year instead of every six months for people who are not at top pay, just to simplify everything. I mean, it's, we don't have to, we can stick with the other, but that would be my recommendation instead, cause right now, the way it works is if someone is hired in, in six months, they get a raise. Six months later, they get a raise. Six months later, they get a raise, and we keep stair stepping until they get the top pay. I would suggest we just do a yearly raise and we do it for everybody at the same time and we're done, which is why I put those down where it says twenty twenty-five. I moved those down to cut them down. The big changes on this was for police officers. I took that up to, I put that down at thirty-two dollars an hour. Reason for that, and that's a sizable increase. You can see over last year. Uh, it's four dollar increase an hour over last year. Currently at top pay, Asheville is paying thirty-one fifty. South Bloomfield's paying thirty-one seventy-three, seventy-four. They're within a quarter of each other.
Is that with Asheville's new increase?
That's where they are. That's where they were as of two weeks ago. And then with us, we were at twenty-eight dollars. So I think this gets us up to where we're at least compatible or comparable to our two closest villages. Like I said, that's the larger, the other thing that I changed on there, I moved or would suggest that council change. What I propose is for the police sergeant to become, right now, we, we've got the police sergeant category, but we do not have, we got that job title, but we have no police sergeants at this time. I would suggest that we do the police sergeant as a salary position instead of a, um, hourly, just because it's a management supervisory role. And what we've, what we have done with our other supervisory roles, where we stand now, like we have our plant operators who all work hourly. Then we have a job title of a plant superintendent, plant superintendent, I'm sorry, we have a plant supervisor, who we have no one in that position currently. That position pays fourteen percent more than the comparable class for a plant operator. The fourteen percent figure was, came up with because when you go salary, you're giving up all overtime. And so it was like ten percent to make up your overtime and four percent because you're supervisory role. The plant superintendent out there gets eighteen percent more than the comparable plant operator. Basically, he's four percent above the plant supervisor. So what I proposed on this was the police sergeant, if he's moved to hourly, he makes fourteen percent more than the pay of the police officers. And then the police chief makes eighteen percent more than the police officers, or four percent more than the, um, police sergeant. That's how I came up with those. So those are the biggest changes I put on there. The hourly employees was all based off of one dollar an hour raise. That's a two thousand eighty dollar a year raise.
Yep.
You wanna give the chief, the police chief an eighteen percent raise and the police sergeant?
At top pay, yes. That would put them, it's an eighteen percent above what the, what the police officer makes. It's not an, I'm not sure what the figure is. I can figure it out real quick if you want. But it would be an eighteen percent raise or eighteen percent more than the police officers make.
Four percent more than the person below.
Four percent more than the person below him.
I don't know that the four percent between sergeant and chief is good because eventually we're gonna have to add somebody between them.
I would say cross that bridge when we get to it. I, I mean, it's, it's just because for right now, what, what we're kind of, I guess, the ultimate goal, looking at that is, we wind up, right now, we have eight police, or counting the chief, we have eight officers in the depart- eight people in the department. If we get a third person in there, we'll have nine people, which will allow us to have three people on each shift. We have the chief, two officers on the day shift, then we could have a sergeant and two officers on second trick, and a sergeant and two officers on third trick. That's the ultimate goal, where I'd like to see Commercial Point eventually get to.
I don't think we're far off from that, looking at the call volume and the amount of stuff.
It, it is.
The group we've got, they're doing a lot of supervision initiated, initiated stuff. I think we're pretty close to needing to add another one, you know, within the next year to eighteen months at the, at the most.
So I just, and like I said, I don't see us squeezing in a lieutenant or anything in between there or a captain between the sergeant and the chief for a while, so that's why I just kept the chief four percent above the sergeant. And the sergeant's eighteen percent above the officers.
And I will say, we're still low at, at seventy-eight, six twenty-four. I believe that's the lowest paid police chief anywhere around here. Bloomfield, I don't know what their new one is. The last one was at ninety-five. Asheville's right at ninety. So, I mean, we're still below there. I just don't know if just barely matching the other two where we wanna be. Well, I, I, I ran it up. I, I went all five steps, like I, I said I would at that last meeting, but, I mean, mine, mine tossed out at thirty-six fifty after the last step.
Yeah, I think the big, I was actually in a, uh, Bickway County mayor's meeting last week, and we were sitting there and we kinda discussed this a little bit, and Bloom, South Bloomfield was paying their officers. Theirs was quite a bit well. It was a little bit lower than ours, probably about fourteen percent or no. They was paying their officers so much, and then they were paying so much of their P E R S. They was paying the officer's share of the P E R S. And every time they, every time they tried to hire somebody, it looked like they wasn't getting paid anything. So I think they quit paying the P E R S for the employee share.
Right.
And put it on, so it looks like they got a huge raise, which they didn't. They just transferred the money of what they were doing. But they, they basically sit there and said, the mayor of South Bloomfield, he sat there and said, well, we had to do something to make it look like we was at least keeping up with Asheville and Commercial Point. So they kinda like took away a benefit and added more cash just to make it look good on paper for a guy starting out.
So I have a question. Are we just, when we're, we're talking about this and then we vote about it, are we just like looking at these numbers and saying, okay, for everybody, or are we, we're not looking at like, um, performance evaluations or anything with that?
The wages, performance evaluations per the employee guideline handbook is if someone doesn't perform or is underperformed, the wages aren't guaranteed that you move to the next step. But yes, you are, you would be.
So performance indicates if you go to the next step. This is just for the role, not for the person, correct?
Correct.
Does that make sense? Do we give performance evaluations every year?
Yes.
Performance, like, so. Let's say performance.
Well, no, we've been doing it once a year. We've been doing it once a year for all of the hourly employees.
Okay.
But you haven't been doing them for salaries.
Correct. And the, the, the salary, actually, uh, the salary people that report, well, at the plant, at the plant, the salary person is you, is the utility superintendent is the only one. And he does get a performance review, and that's done by John Burks.
Yeah, for water and sewage.
For him. And John does, I haven't been doing one, and it's on me. I haven't been doing one on John, Wendy, or the chief. They all report directly to me. I see them every day, and when I've got a problem, I yank them in and I let them know immediately.
So I mean, that's, you haven't been doing them, then, I don't know, but, and then just giving raise. I don't know, that's, uh, I, I just think that, okay, we're gonna give everybody that's topped out a dollar. Everybody else, we're gonna give you a fifteen to eighteen percent raise. I'm just one person, but I'm the now.
Well, the, the, the police isn't, isn't a raise too. It's, we've got a good group now, it, it appears, for the most part. And we're gonna keep losing them. We're gonna continue to have new, continue to have new, continue to have right out of, out of the academy, and, and that's a liability issue.
I'm not saying don't give them a raise, but I'm saying don't.
Well, no, that's why, that's why it's so much. It, it's because of the job. It's what the market is, is saying it takes to get.
And you're entitled to your opinion?
Yeah, like I said, this is just.
Steadfast on mine. I, I just, I think it's.
This is just a proposal. Council can do anything they want with it. But the, um, it'll be in front of you in, as part of the employee guideline handbook, so. So it's, it's all council decision.
Yeah, I like, I, I like for us, I think it's important that we're close. Uh, I don't think we have to match everybody, um, and I'm, I'm gonna say this kinda, kinda tongue-in-cheek, but I think at some, at some point, the, the value that an individual has working for Commercial Point, whether it's because they admire the police chief or the mayor's ability to govern the department, for, for things that are, that are in, intangible, things that, that they don't have a dollar sign on them, but some, you know, I think there needs to be some, like, some buy-in from the individual that says, I, I'd say I like that community and that's where I wanna be, even if it's, even if it's a dollar less than someplace else. You know, there are trade-offs. You move to South Bloomfield and, and you're gonna be up and down twenty-three, you're gonna be, you're gonna be dealing with a whole lot different stuff than, than you are, you know, in, in our community like this. But at, at some point, I think, you know, we need to create enough interest by value of the community and, and the administration, uh, the, the way things work.
Yeah, and I just wanna say that I think value is also knowledge too. So if somebody is going above and beyond and has multiple job titles, even if it's not in their job title.
Right.
Then we need to be increasing them as well, like the police officers are getting increased. If we're, if that, if we're bumping police officers up because that's market value, then market value, to me, also includes people who have knowledge, and maybe we have to change their job descriptions to include that and give them the raise that they deserve.
How would you suggest changing a job description for the police officers?
I'm not talking about the police officer. I'm talking about some of these other ones. Like, like, I'm just saying, if you're, if you're doing like multiple, multiple jobs.
Such as?
Like Paula is an admin?
Three job titles according to our code.
I understand.
You know, clerk accords, you know, so there are three that she covers. I, I mean, I don't know what.
God, sir.
No, I'm just saying, like, I know that Paula is just an admin, but I know she does a lot of other things, and I'm just saying, if she's doing other things, like if she's being the clerk or she's doing other things, then we need to like add that in, and we need to give her that bump that, that she deserves, and if, if Wendy's a fiscal officer and she's doing other multiple things, then we just need to update those, and I'm not just talking about these two, I'm talking about if anybody on here is doing multiple jobs, then we just need to account for that, I think.
I think Mike is doing more than what his intended use was sometimes.
Right, so him too. I mean, I just don't know. I don't know all of it, but I just, I mean.
Mike, Mike was hired because, in fact, if, if, his, his unique set of skills, he can do a little bit of everything, and that was the reason that he was head and shoulders above other people who wanted uh, to come in and talk about the job, is that he can operate the machinery, he can maintain the machinery, he can, he, he does it all, and, and you just don't find that skill set. So he knew, he knew what he was gonna get into when he came in here, and he, and I think he did a fabulous job with. You know, but he just, but it's, you know, this is where you remember, if we remember, a couple of years ago, we had a, a council member that's complaining because you hired somebody for the street department, you're paying them a lot? You don't, you don't know the circumstance. You don't know the whys and the wherewithal or, or what is, you don't know what this person, you know, what an asset it is. Or you would be thinking differently, that, thinking about somebody that's walking behind a pickup truck in, in Columbus and throwing asphalt in a hole. That's not, that's not what his job is. I mean, that, he does that.
I think everybody else, not just, um, Mike, I think everybody has, um, many skill sets. And, um, I, I don't know if they're, um, you know.
I'm just saying, if we're gonna bump up the, I'm, my, my point is, if we're gonna bump up the police officers to, to somewhere that they should be based on other cities and other whatever, then we should also bump up everyone that same kind of amount, because it's the economy and, and cost of living and skill sets and keeping our employees happy, and, you know, especially if they're doing multiple jobs. That's my only point.
I, I think that we are comparable. Other than with the police department is way out of whack. I think all the other jobs are relatively comparable, if not higher than the local communities. I think all the other jobs are relatively comparable, if not higher than the local communities, local villages. Now, some of the other villages, like I know if you go to South Bloomfield, I believe they've got. I don't know, two or three people in the office doing office work.
In Nashville.
And Asheville is exactly, I mean, Asheville's got what, thirty some employees?
Yeah.
And Bloomfield has all these. We have three people in the office or we have two people in the office.
Right.
So we have. People doing that stuff at the same time. Like I said, I would, we pay for those jobs. We're paying more than Nashville, Bloomfield or whatever. But, like I said, this is your decision, this.
Do we need to add a person in the office?
I honestly, I.
The only reason we're not there yet is because of you. Yeah.
No, and I will say this too. Let me just say this. I know, like, if you hire another person. Instead of paying for the knowledge and value you have now, you have to pay for that person for the training and its time and that's just as expensive. That's my.
It it certainly, it certainly, and I don't disagree with you. It's, you're you're right in what you're saying. My concern is that after tomorrow, Wendy goes out, buys a lottery ticket and in four days she's moving to Tahiti. Okay, now what?
Right.
That's my concern. A lot of stuff Paula can do, but a lot of stuff day to day has come from twenty years of experience from doing this stuff. You you can't, you can't replace that. You know, there's nothing you can do. That has to be promoted and trained and passed on. That has to be developed. There's no way around that. So, yeah, I have a concern both ways and I I I agree with what you're saying. I. I would first, you know, think that we ought to take the, well, no, I'm gonna stay out of this for a minute.
But something you said, Ross, when you were talking about, you know, they should just um, I, sorry, I don't know your exact words, but. Be thankful they're here or whatever and they work here. Wouldn't the same be said to our police officers? That are threatening to go somewhere else? Shouldn't they be happy they work somewhere that's primarily safe? They don't have to be on twenty three?
I'm saying that's worth something. I'm not saying that that's.
I think it's kind of double edged there with with you.
I don't think it's a four dollar, five dollar an hour issue, but I, I think if we're within a dollar or change. Of everybody else, then then we're in great shape. That that's just, you know.
I just think everybody should be um. Should be paid what what they deserve to be paid, their worth.
And the problem is that we don't have a person to determine that.
Well, really?
There's no book, there's no.
We hold the purse strings, honey.
I know sweetheart, but but this is something that, you know, it it's hard for somebody to determine and the mayor's done that. And the mayor has given us a sheet and said, this is what this ought to be worth. This is what it ought to be. So our discussion is. Are are we close to this or or?
Well, some things he looked at, like he said, we're paying whatever, you know, the, what was it, Eric, the federal? And then it's like the state levels, like, well, we're paying, we're we're paying the police what the state level should be. Oh, well, it didn't matter with that one. You know, it was.
I I I think the difference with it, that is, yeah, the state average, and I've got the sheet here in front of me, the police officers, was it? Was it, um, I believe it was twenty eight dollars an hour or something like that? And that's right where we were. The problem is, everyone in our community is paying above state average. And if we want to compete with all the community, we're gonna have to be where we are. I mean, we've got Columbus, we can't compete with, within ten miles of us. Within five miles of us. We have Grove City, we can't compete with them. So looking the other direction, the least we ought to be able to compete with is South Bloomfield and Nashville. And we're not, wage wise, we can't even, we're not even competing with them. So I, and they have chose to pay above state average. I don't like it, but that's where they chose to pay because that's what they felt they had to do to keep people. So that kind of puts us in a point, if our surrounding communities want to pay above average, we've got to stay up and even with them.
I think it's a supply and demand.
That's exactly where it is.
People post the COVID era, post the the other issue.
Especially in those fields.
Right.
In the police field.
And and there are a lot of people looking for some jobs that we have. So, I mean. It's just one of those things that, you know, it's unfortunate, but it's the reality we live in and it's just a supply and demand. I know enrollment in the local police academies is down sixty two percent from three years ago. I just called today to get that number and so if you want people, you're gonna have to pay.
And it's just some jobs right at the moment are harder to fill than others. I mean, it's, it's a reality. I, like I said, it's, you've all got to find a decision on it.
Yeah. Well, technically, according to the. Tables for the clerk of courts for Ohio, now I get that this is Ohio in general. But they have it for twenty twenty four, that's what I work with. Um, if their population range is one to fifty five thousand. The salary is sixty six, two, two, three. So it's like one point two thousand per thousand people. So, I mean, if someone's doing clerk of court stuff, they should get the amount that it would be for. That amount of population. Does that make sense?
No, you don't pay everybody for each individual job. You don't. I mean, you get paid for every individual job that you do at your office.
But if it, no, but I left my previous job because I was doing multiple jobs and they weren't paying for me or giving me job.
I granted that you need to be in in the realm, but the thing is, you can't get, you can't break each and every one of your job titles down. And say, I want top pay for this, I want top pay for this, I want top pay for this and make it fair.
No, you have to earn it and you have to have some performance evaluations, which is making this so difficult for me because I want to see performance evaluations on each person, not each. Not just look at numbers on a paper. That's my personal.
And I agree, I I agree that it should be a person.
There's, there's performance evaluations, like I said, back there for everyone except for John Gross, Wendy and Chief. Everybody else, there's a, there's one in her file that was done within the past year. You're welcome to come in the office and look at it.
Public records.
Yes, absolutely. And I will say that all of them say everyone's doing satisfactory or above.
I would think if we asked them to not doing satisfactory, that'd be an issue itself.
Exactly.
I would like to see um from non-performance evaluations done on the salary people as well. On chief, Wendy, and.
I can do that. I tell you, they're all gonna be satisfactory.
Still having it on paper.
Well, I think it wants to correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I always got one every year. All right, um.
So are we on stalemate right now?
Yeah.
Well, this will be coming in front of you for a vote in January.
Right, that's why I ask, because then.
Because. In two weeks.
Yeah.
Because that's, and I would sug, I would suggest. If council changed um when it was, when we was doing two raises a year.
Yeah.
They bumped it up to do it in February. I would wholeheartedly suggest we move that back to May or June. Do one a year in May or June because at the end of twenty twenty five, you're gonna have four council seats open. And four, then the people sitting here at the end of twenty twenty five can make a decision what you want to pay people. And if those four seats would flip to four new council members, they come in and say, we're not gonna pass a budget for that.
Possible.
That's very possible.
Yeah.
So I would just highly suggest that this doesn't go into effect until after the permanent budget is set and the money. For employee wages has been appropriated.
I think that makes sense.
May, May or Ju, and I don't.
What makes it best for you?
I was gonna say, the budget has to be set by April the first.
Yeah.
And that's my only concern, because if you sit here and you set it in January or you set it in December, you could be voting on, well. This could have been voted on at the last meeting or something like that, if they decided to vote it ahead of time and then the new council comes in and decides I'm not gonna fund, fund the positions.
Especially if we're gonna move it to once a year raises rather than stuff by stuff.
Is everyone okay, is everyone okay with that? I guess, start at the small thing, does that make?
Three steps and then once a year, or so is that what?
No, no, what what I was proposing was just doing once a year. And basically doubling up, like if if the step used to be fifty cents a step twice a year, it's a dollar now.
Okay.
It just, it's paying the same thing. It just, we're eliminating all the.
That doesn't leave out people who are topped out, correct? I mean, they're still gonna get a raise every year as long as it's budgeted.
As long as it's in, yeah, in range. They're gonna do the performance, performance reviews in April, so we have them in May.
I would say, I'd be say December. I think we've done them now like in um August, September.
Usually they're done on like their anniversary dates.
Not, we haven't been doing, no, not on.
Your police officers, you've been doing different because you've been asking.
Well, they're all brand new. We've, we've been trying with the new ones if they're, if they're on probation. We've been trying to do one on every, on sixty days, ninety days and a hundred and twenty days. And then you get the the review when you vote to confirm them or not confirm them. After that, it reverts to once a year and I believe I was asking all those to be in in August, no. September, October, it was prior to the November rates, was what we was doing.
I'd say as long as we have enough time if people.
That could, that could be bumped up to, hey, we do that before. June, if you, if you did, if you did a raise with the first pay period in June, all the, or May. All the employee yearly reviews have to be in by, you know, February. Something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's not a problem on our end to to jockey that around a little bit.
Is there too much going on, I mean, as we grow and have more people, is there too much going on in January, February for you to be able to do reviews by then?
I don't do the reviews. I have one person that I have to do.
Oh, okay. She, she does, she does one review. Um, if we have a super, if we have a supervisor. They would do the guys underneath him at the plant, then the plant superintendent does review for the supervisor. And then John Gross does the one for the utility superintendent. John does the one for the street department superintendent.
Who does police officers?
Adam does all because we don't have a sergeant. If we had a sergeant. And I will say I was looking at trying to this year bring in a sergeant, at least one sergeant, if not two. Depending on if we get another employee or not. So that we could have a sergeant on each shift. The sergeant would be doing the reviews of the two guys underneath him and then the chief would be doing the reviews of the sergeants.
Personally, I would like to see one added in twenty twenty five.
And that's, whenever you get to the budget, that's, that's that discussion, yeah.
Yep.
So I think we're, we're on the same page with yearly and performance evaluations. I think where we're off is. Um, I don't know if the council has any, I'm not saying that everybody should get a three, four dollar raise. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying is there any wiggle room for any discussion of even another dollar?
What's, what's a reasonable raise for the year, a dollar wise? Well, I mean, for some people, a dollar is, you know, is five percent. For some people, it's not. Two dollars would be a ten percent raise. So I mean.
A a dollar an hour, there's the. Yeah, it's like it's lowest paid person's getting a four point three five percent raise for the year. And the highest paid person was getting a two point two four and I believe the cost of living was two point five this year.
And and the, and 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 that seems to be very reasonable because it has the greatest impact on the lowest wage. You know, if I did, you know, that's where the greatest hit is one of them.
And that's, well, I think last year council, at the same, it was probably the first time we did that.
Yeah.
I mean, council, they used to always give everyone, okay, we're giving everyone a two or three percent raise. The lowest person got the lowest raise, the highest paid person gets the highest raise. You give everyone a buck and then if you want to look at the percentages, the lowest person's getting the biggest raise and the highest paid person's getting the lowest raise. But everyone gets the buck or the two thousand dollars a year.
Yep.
And that's what we did last year. It's, like I said, it's, however you want to do it.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay, so I guess now we're still set out, so we won't talk anymore.
Well. I'm just comparing all the, the three lowest paid positions, which is utility technician. Street laborer and admin assistant.
Street laborer, we don't even have.
Yeah, that's just put in there just in case that, yeah.
But I, yeah, I, I'm kind of, I think that the administrative assistant should be at the same rate as the other two. Um, assistant or laborer positions.
For sure.
Utility technician. You know, top out at twenty five fifty. Uh, and a street laborer top out twenty five fifty and I think that the administrative assistant. We'll move that to the same scale.
To the same scale?
Yep. So what's that, four dollars? Dollar fifty. A bit off fifteen dollars.
It would be two.
It'd be two dollars and fifty cent an hour raise.
Yeah.
Cause the street, the street laborer, you was looking at a dollar an hour.
Oh, I was looking at twenty five.
Yeah.
Yeah, something the difference between the twenty five. Such a couple of happens. I mean, I guess, I'm not talking against it, but I guess the, the argument there would be the street laborers out in five degree weather digging ditches.
Yep, and the admin's sitting there listening to people griping and complaining. I used to be an admin, so.
I'll take the ditch. I'll take the ditch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, so if if we, if we do that, is it more palatable to to bring police to a competitive wage?
We are at a competitive race. We brought them up, like.
If we.
I mean, if we do this, then we brought them up.
Okay, you don't mean to bring a lot more?
No, 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 I mean, to where he, where, to the thirty two dollars or whatever, thirty one fifty or. I mean, because that is a supply and demand, unfortunately, it's just something that.
I mean, I never really thought about it like that, Ross.
Well, I think, I I like where Alan is with the, with the police. I like, I say that there has to be some value to working here. This is not just a job. It's a place where we need to be proud to be, to be glad to be here.
I would choose, where'd you talk about?
To be here, for so, with the police.
The what?
It's thirty two, right?
Yeah, was the top.
That puts a seventy five cents an hour above.
Plus the other.
I think.
Nah, about fifty cents. I think they was thirty one, fifty one, I think.
Plus the other added benefits we have like AFLAC and.
Yeah, they've, they've got some benefits, but I don't know where at all. I think our benefits were relatively close.
Unfortunately, the, the ones coming out of the police academy, they have to hit the numbers on their paycheck. And I think that's what Bloomfield found out way back when I worked there. We're the ones that begged for them to pay that fourteen percent because. We didn't, we didn't want to see this big number up here and nothing down here because.
But it got hard. It's, it's hard for them when someone goes on and wants to get a job.
Right.
They're looking at.
Dollar to dollar.
If, yeah, they're just gonna look at dollars. Don't want to apply Bloomfield or Commercial Point, Commercial Point's higher.
Yeah, and I mean, that's.
And it's just, it's.
This is the way things change, but. So if we do that, is, is everybody good with this, voting for it next meeting?
No voting tonight.
Next meeting, no.
We're not, we're not counting votes tonight.
No.
Is everybody happy with what it's saying?
Are, are we glad putting this to bed till?
Wouldn't be, you know, I.
I, I, I would, with that.
Well, thank you, school son.
The fiscal officer, like a dollar raise would.
Two thousand.
Would not be, you know, I think uh. I, I mean, she does a lot of utility stuff, so can the same be said for her and. What her job duties are.
Give her the same two fifty? Is that what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You can always delegate a range to Alan to.
And um.
Yeah, here's a minimal.
That's good. I'm working finance right now and I think it's, it's tough balancing things, especially with everything that you have to do for a range.
Well, and honestly, we know these next two years will be probably very busy.
I, I.
Probably our, our biggest years with stuff for.
Wendy and I have talked to your point earlier about getting an extra person in here. We have discussed this. I can see us getting to the point where we have a, basically a utility clerk in the office and they do nothing but utility stuff far as. Printing the bills, dealing with all those phone calls and doing their thing and having someone else. Far as printing the bills, dealing with all those phone calls and doing their thing and having someone else sit at the front counter or do whatever. Answer the phones, more of a receptionist type deal, but also handle all the mayor's court stuff and just splitting the jobs out. That's eventually, it's gonna have to happen. Right now Wendy comes in on Sundays or whatever and prints off utility bills. Cause we don't want to hear the machine running during the week.
Okay, so to my point though, if she's coming in on Sundays, like, let's, let pay her for coming.
Well, and keep her out of here. Try, I, I beg you.
Yeah, I, I, I dealt with this for years. I think that's the, the value of knowing that, that she works here and she values it, so she wants to do it, you know.
Right, right.
Pull, pull the time sheet, yeah, she's not making what you think she is an hour because she's putting in seventy hours of pay very easily.
Yeah, that's mine.
Okay.
I, I.
Okay.
Who's, what are you talking about?
He didn't think we had a street superintendent.
If that's a street laborer.
A street superintendent is Mike.
So you're typing two fifty on him as well?
I wasn't, no.
On who? The late street laborer? I wouldn't, that, cause that's.
The street laborers.
State averages.
He's right on.
Well, that's what we're paying, that's what the state averages. Like I said, and I, I looked at this just as trying to base it, base it off of where we are. If someone leaves tomorrow, can I hire someone back into that position?
There you go.
And the only one on here that I propose that I have a problem getting hired back in is police officers. I'm, she leaves, I'm gone, so I'm not gonna worry about it.
Wendy leaves, I'm out of here.
There's a few of us walking out the door at that point.
Don't ask for a raise, Wendy. A dollar on the street superintendent, two fifty on administrative assistant, and two fifty on the fiscal officer.
And then the police and what you.
I, I will make the changes in the book. It isn't up to me, it's up to you.
Well, no, that's what, we can put that to bed if those are.
The administrative assistants, it's two fifty.
So it'd be twenty five fifty.
I deserve it all.
And then.
Street superintendent would be a dollar, so it'd be thirty three dollars. And then the fiscal officer would be thirty nine plus two fifty. And then the police officers, and everybody else would do it.
Thank you, everyone.
Now we'll vote no.
The Addison Farms, Tiff and NCA, are there any updates?
I emailed Alan today, and we're gonna, I'm gonna come in with one, review that with him on Thursday.
Sarah and Alan are gonna perform the first review, and then we're gonna meet.
And I have went through, I've got mine, I don't know if you've got yours. I just did mine in pencil. I've got a lot of.
That's okay. I think you're for the red line. I, I'll do whatever, whatever you think is best. I don't, if anyone has anything that they want to take out, that you have things. Get it to me, I'll bring it in on Thursday, and then I'll.
So get it to you before Thursday.
Thank you.
Are, are they coming to the next council meeting?
They're waiting. They're waiting on a red line for me.
Yeah, that, that, the next step we have is the red line.
Yeah.
We, we, we have kind of agreed to go back and forth that way.
Yeah.
With it.
So we'll get our red line, it'll go to Bill, Bill can look at it and forward it on to them, and we'll figure out when they want to come in.
Okay.
After Bill does his thing.
I think it will be two or three passes on red line.
Next, we have the land use committee discussion.
Um, I did get a, uh, I know we'd said it could be expensive to move on from here. And we did have somebody say a ballpark would be about fifteen grand to take what we started with since we went so far. To, to our concept, to a final, um, you know, a map that looks professional. And maybe some more, you know, explanation. But honestly, the three of us on the committee, we, we were tapped out.
Do you want a map, or do you want to start looking at a comprehensive plan with the township?
I don't, that didn't work last time. I think we just need to worry about ourselves. And, I mean, if they want to look at it after that, it's, it's kind of the. The atmosphere before the committee, the council, you know, the stance that we took.
So you want to look at a land use professional?
I think so, because there's not a whole lot more that we can do that we have asked for you to do.
Right, I mean, it's.
And.
It's got the start of a comprehensive plan, which all townships in Ohio should have. For their zoning, and one of my concerns for you is. If the township isn't going to have a comprehensive plan, isn't going to zone around you.
Right.
And the land doesn't come into you, there's going to be a, a conflict. Um, and maybe you're not going to have a comprehensive plan with it, but having the discussion with the trustees. Probably a good thing to do. If you have the developments come in that are on the board right now. Probably not in the next decennial, but in the. You know, probably in twenty years, you're going to get close to that status of losing village. Um, and then it gets expensive. And it gets, everybody's full time and everybody's getting six figures. And if you don't plan with your comprehensive plan with the township. That day could come sooner than you want it to, so.
Yeah.
It's just something to think about. And if you'd rather, you know, you can interview firms for. Land use maps for proposed, you know, areas of commerce. You can use Morpsy, you can sit down with Morpsy and talk to them, they can offer you ideas. But you guys have more knowledge than you think. Pretty far along, you guys are pretty far along.
Help me, if this is way off. I think the biggest problem we had is not industrial parks. It's, it's not, it's not the outreach thing. It's these little pockets.
Yeah.
That are between here and one oh four, here and Snyder Road. I mean, little pockets of places that it's like, you know, it's, there's forty acres, there's two acres, there's two homesteads. And that, that to me was the great challenge of trying to, trying to put together something like this. Cause we're looking at what would be compatible to, to what's next to it. And, and the way the developments are going and the way things are being engineered now. There may be actually any number of things that would be compatible. So I mean, it just, um, I, I, at times I felt like I was rear, rear ranging deck chairs on the Titanic.
Well, that's where comprehensive plan and a comprehensive look at the zoning code and, and how many more residences? Businesses do you want within your square mileage?
The hard part is going to be to, to get them, to get the businesses in the, in the development where we want them, where we think they belong.
And, and the green space that we want, reserve.
And I think that there are firms around here, people who know, who live around here, who know the area and who, who know companies. That can not only recommend what we should do, but also apply for grants for us. That we wouldn't even have to pay them for doing because they have programs that, that.
Grants for.
Grants for, to get money to do any kind of like green spaces or, um, like brown fields and that kind of thing.
With water, there's, there's things.
Yeah, and there's things that they can do under the green spaces to like, for water.
Susan's generally aware of all of the state aid for sewer water infrastructure. She's also made aware of any state or federal program, um, because that's where the engineers make their money. On the engineering of those programs. So relying on Susan, Susan's probably the first step I would take in, in getting recommendations for a land use person. Or if her firm does that, but. So you talk about another person, sooner or later, you're going to get a grants person.
Yeah, do you recommend that the land use committee have another meeting, invite the side of the township trustees? And then try to sit down with them and, and have a conversation?
I would do that.
Okay.
If I were, I'm not an elected official, but I would sit down with the township and say, hey, here's our comprehensive plan from fifteen years ago. We think it's time to update. Are you willing to pony up some money to, to redo a comprehensive plan? Is it time to? If not, this is what we're, we're going to do. We're gonna talk with the land use group, we're gonna interview three candidates, we're gonna hire someone, we're gonna have a look at this map. We're gonna look at the comprehensive plan, and we're gonna decide our own fate. We'd like you in the boat with us, but.
Maybe give them an opportunity to.
They give them an opportunity. Do you want to update the comprehensive plan or not? And they may say, no, we're fine with the comprehensive plan as it exists.
Well, they, they don't have one. They do not have one.
And the problem last time.
They, they need one.
Well, they don't have.
I understand, and I'm not their counsel. I'm just saying, maybe the personnel have changed, maybe it's time for the conversation.
I would, I would suggest, instead of trying to get the three of them here for a meeting with you three. Maybe you send one representative to their meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
And just go to a public meeting and bring it up at the public meeting and see if they have any interest.
Absolutely.
How'd that work for you?
Well, if all three of them were here, they would have to post it as a meeting.
They would have to be a special meeting and all that stuff.
Too, as we, we did, at, at our meeting time, I had contacted one of the, the former trustees. Who still is employed with the township. And, uh, he, he brought me all their material, the complete file of everything that was, that was gone through. And I was a, a part of the committee at that time, but we went through everything, we talked about it. And my firm understanding, um, from, from his comments was that they had zero interest.
Absolutely.
Can even talk to them, but I, but.
Right, times, times have changed and.
Well, this is.
No, this was six weeks ago.
Tis the season, that's what he's trying to say.
If, if they have no interest in, then the, the choice is made.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If they wish to comply with Ohio law and help their own zoning.
But you're, you're right, though, it, it would, it would be a wise. To go and just pose the question.
You're right.
Do we, on a map such as this, do we actually want to spell out, okay, I see we have LMSO. Down here, just taking, for example, the piece of property directly north of seven sixty two, up here in the northeast corner. And I know that was probably put there because it matches everything above it.
That, that should probably be commercial, I mean.
Well, and that's what I was gonna ask, should that be something more of a retail along there? We have.
We don't have that though.
Or a general, general commercial or commercial.
Uh, that's where I think we're gonna have to add some other categories.
And I'm, I'm just wondering.
Yes.
Because I, I see seven sixty two is our only major thoroughfare coming into town. If, looking down the road, if you was gonna put a Home Depot or Krogers, where on this map?
Here, here.
Yeah, right along seven sixty two?
Yep, across from the gas station.
And we, and we know it's not gonna work up here anytime soon. Because of sewage water and it's out of the way off a state highway.
Yeah, this is, this is it.
And that's the only thing that bothers me is like this here shows PRD coming up pretty close or whatever. And it's, I would think from at least from Gibson to seven, to the Sider River. This whole stretch ought to be really looked at seriously.
It is a two hundred foot.
But that, but that doesn't give enough room to build a McDonald's.
Oh, no, I know.
Yeah, we just had to pick a number. We didn't, I mean.
Yeah, and I get that.
Mine, I mean, if it needs to be five hundred, five hundred, but we just wanted to get across the idea that we know that that is our tax revenue.
But I, I just, I just see that as our major.
You're right.
Yeah, that little area, that, that stretch of seven sixty two right there, I think.
Yep.
And those four corners are gonna be the ultimate. Yes.
If not one sixty one. Yeah, I agree, that, but it was.
And with, and with whatever goes in there, I think we would be in our best interest to be looking down the road as. Okay, we, we know this is all farmland, we've, we've got one house in between here and there.
One, now one.
One house currently. Over here, there's nothing on that side of the road.
Right.
If you ever want to put in a divided highway such as a Buckeye Parkway. With the divide, with trees down the middle and everything, you come, come across the bridge and all of a sudden you got this beautiful entrance coming in. It can get you from the Sider River all the way up to Gibson.
Yeah.
And have your Home Depots, your whatever. Along, along the side with your turn lanes, whatever you build the thing out. And you're, and, and you're roundabout at seven sixty two or one oh four.
That's, that's excellent, though, because that, that's exactly what we were expecting.
You know, and that's, that's the kind of, and I, I saw that and it was like warehousing. And I think the last thing, and I know we talked, and at one time we was working with a guy trying to get warehouses in there.
I know.
I think that'd be the worst thing to do, because we're selling out our only piece of property that could be valuable down the road.
That's why this discussion has to take place. That's exactly it.
And this, this literally was just the, the building blocks to open the conversations. But I don't, I don't think that we want to wait too awfully long to at least have something. So as we have people come in, the American handed to them and say, this seems to be the.
This is kind of like a dream. We're looking at, I mean, if someone came in right now and said, I want to put a warehouse there, and I'm looking at your map, it says warehouse, that means you're okay with that. And it'd be nice to say, we're not okay with it, this is what we're looking for. And I don't know, I don't know, though, if you put down our actual, the zoning you want, or do you just put down?
That, see, that's.
That's where you talk to the city planner.
And you figure out.
This is, this is all the land we have, this is what we got left.
Yeah.
What makes.
What, what's the best use for?
Correct.
We're going to be a city in two census from now, if not one census from now. Give us a roadmap.
Yep.
So it sounds like you already have like a quote from.
Yeah, to do exactly that. They did Plain City. So if they can do it for that amount, then it could probably be done by other people. It was to take this, and it's, uh, it's what they did for Plain City. And it's to have different areas, like an, an uptown area, a light manufacturing, a retail. And they look at, like, exactly what.
So we're, we're looking at something more of a map as opposed to a complete land use deal, starting off.
It's basically a redo of what we handed them.
Proposed.
With their knowledge here, and then the literature to support how we came up with that.
Yeah.
So it's not like a great big thing, it's probably why the cost was, you know, I didn't.
It's not a full on comprehensive.
Yeah, it's just to get us something to be able, for you to give people to come in and say, well, that's great, you want to sell, here's what the appetite is.
Here's the space, like, here's the space that's available for what you're looking.
What was the price?
Uh, fifteen thousand ballpark.
Maybe get with, with, um, Susan and see if she has.
Right.
You know, just have a couple, and that way when it's, we can get it.
Yeah, it has to be someone that you're comfortable with, that knows the area. Because what you don't want is someone to come in and draw up Yellow Springs for you, or draw up Granville for you, right?
These, these people have four hundred communities in Ohio that they do review. Closest, I believe, is Plain City, and I think they do some small stuff with Grove City. I think I saw on the list, but I don't know how much.
They did.
Interview them, by all means.
Well, that's, that's on Alan, right? I, I, who does that? I don't want to step outside of my lane.
Alan, I, Susan, doesn't matter.
Yeah, I mean, cause I, I don't think that's on the committee to do that.
Okay, we'll, we'll see if that, if that's.
But if someone on the committee wanted to get, like, if one of us council members wanted, they got a quote from somebody, we could.
I would recommend that whoever is going to make the choice, interview at least two or three firms, so you've got something to.
I mean, we can as a committee, I just don't want to step on.
Why, why don't we let the committee go ahead and do, I mean, you're the guys that have worked on this from the beginning, I think it would only be.
Okay.
You guys know it, and, and that way you can have a public meeting and you can have them all come in in fifteen minute intervals.
That'd be perfect.
Okay.
Interview them all.
I just wanted to ask, yeah, I just wanted to ask.
Mid-January.
Make sure it's a posted meeting.
Yeah.
With an agenda.
Yeah.
Ten minutes. You can deliberate in private, but.
Okay, and then would we bring our choice up? Or then would we have to forward that to you or Alan or somebody?
I, I would say that you'd bring your choice to a council meeting for approval.
To committee of the whole. Everyone can look at it, and if they got any questions, they can go through it, and then we put on the agenda for regular meeting.
No, it's professional services, so it wouldn't have to be necessarily the lowest bid, but I would let them all know that you're looking. You know, council's gonna give you approval between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars, depending on.
Okay, I just wanted to make, I, I mean, I wanted to make sure we follow the rules.
Yeah, you're, you're below the statutory amount and it's professional services, so you're fine.
All right, thank you.
But you do want to interview them, because you want to be comfortable, that you're gonna get what.
Well done.
Hey, this is the guard round. Hey, this is the guardrail discussion. We have any update on that, Mayor?
Susan is actually working to put up a meeting with ODOT. We kind of went through this, went through this deal with them. She pulled up the original information. Not all the information was in ODOT's safety system. And when I started telling Susan, well, we've got houses being hit, some people's been killed five, six years ago, this, this, and this, hydrants getting run over, and just kind of went through the whole list. Not all of those reports showed up in ODOT's system.
Okay.
So the chief pulled all the information. That's been forwarded, handed off to Susan. In the meantime, we had a meeting in here with a couple of boys from ODOT because they're discussing something else as far as out of seven sixty-two and one oh four. And while they were here, they said that they would kind of like to start doing, maybe having a meeting, their boss, maybe come in and meet with us every six months possibly.
Cool.
Or something like that. And it's like, well, okay, why don't you give him a call now? Because we've got some things we'd like to discuss. Susan's big thing was she don't know that we can automatically just start putting guardrail up. And you'll notice I sent you.
Yeah.
The information I got here. This information was actually mailed, or was emailed to me from the mayor of Bloomfield because they're discussing this at their December meet. In fact, they're discussing it tonight.
Yes.
And they're going through, and he said, well, they basically were told, if you read through this, their guy said, well, you, and Susan told me the same thing, that ODOT's going to want to lower the speed limit as opposed, because my suggestion was if we lowered the speed limit as opposed to putting up guardrail, one, it's going to look nicer. Two, it's going to fix the problem. Where we are at now, the speed limit's fifty to get right to the top of the hill in the middle of the blind curve, and it drops to thirty-five. As opposed to putting up how many thousand dollars worth of guardrail, why don't we put up a fifty-dollar sign and drop it to thirty-five, a little bit extend it out a little bit, and we're done. But the problem is to lower the speed limit, you have to do a speed study. Or ODOT don't even talk to you supposedly.
Yep.
And that is ten to fifteen thousand dollars to get a fifty.
Speed study be the accidents and deaths.
No, they have their list of qualifications they want for their speed study.
The speed study costs how much?
Ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
The guardrail costs how much?
I don't know. We didn't even get a price on that yet because that is probably, and or, or we could get a fifty-dollar sign and just move it and be done with it. And that's my, I wasn't happy. I know Susan was telling me how it had to be done with that stuff. And it's like, I get it. I see it. So we're going to try at least bring the guy up here and talk some common sense into him.
Well, that's a speed study. We can put a sign up?
No.
He is.
They're going to come and take it down. That's. He is with District Six. Yeah. I, I mean, that was, that's my whole argument. To lower the speed limit, they want me to do, or they want us to do a ten to fifty, spend ten to fifteen thousand on a speed study. And then we hand that to them. And you got some guy, some unelected official sitting in Delaware County, doesn't even know where Commercial Point is, going to make a decision based on that piece of paper right there. That's what's going to, and he's going to say, nope, don't, don't fit, and you're done.
It's a hard.
So it's, at the same, at the same time, we do have this thirty-five mile an hour talks about state routes or through highways within a municipal corporation outside of a business district with exceptions. Commercial Point now has both sides of the road down from the top of the hill down to Walker Point. The other thing, so we are within the corporation. Not, not coming, not getting us to Walker Point. We're good. So we, or, or Walker Road. We can get down the hill to Walker Road. Both sides of the road are in Commercial Point.
Yep.
So that, that gets us, that gets us down that far.
And across, across the creek, the first property, the other side of the run on the north side, Scott Klein.
Is Commercial Point. So we, we kind of got ourselves at least a Walker Road.
We can move it to Walker Road now. If we, if we can enforce both sides of the road, it can be moved to Walker Road.
Well, we, I, I want to bring him down and confirm that.
Yeah.
And we talked to him, get his blessing on that. But the other thing that we have, okay, we can move it here. So we're going, if we could legally put it there, we will. But the other thing I'd like to point out, we have a new fire department coming out there, and they come out at the bottom of the hill. No matter which way they turn, they're going uphill in how many ton truck. So every time they pull out, they're doing twenty mile an hour trying to get up the hill, no matter which way they turn, which makes it bad for people popping over the hill doing fifty. So if we can legally move it to Walker Road, I'd like to ask him to use common sense and let us take it to the top of the hill. Maybe it's not quite such a stretch as what we're trying to do. I don't know. But I'd like to at least talk to them first before we go forward spending money on guardrail. Because a cheap fix is to move the sign, and that does exactly what everyone's been asking for, for ten, fifteen years.
Another area of concern, if you could bring it up, is there on seven sixty-two, when you go around Fanon's that curve there, there have been a lot of accidents there just one recently. Two days ago. So, I mean, I know that we really don't have any say on that road, but at least bring it up. I mean, I know that, that house is, how many times I've seen on the Ring camera, her kids getting ready to get on the school bus, and cars are just flying past the school bus.
Yep.
But I, I, I think people, because I think it's fifty through there.
It is fifty.
So I, I just, it'd be nice if that could be like thirty-five, too. But I mean, that's just something in discussion.
And that's where, if you look at this, you'll see what, I mean, and they just, and I know what they're going to say out there, as much as I hate to say this. They're going to say, first of all, it's not in the village. Second of all, you only got, what, two curb cuts, three curb cuts from them houses right there?
Yeah.
Well, and that all comes from forty-five eleven twenty-one. So to write those speeds, they have to meet that, or you're going to lose your ticket. But the other issue with speed that we have, that everybody complains about on Melch Road, let me ask you this. Could we go to the owner on the east side?
Earl Taylor.
And buy a twenty-foot easement all the way up? We would own property on both sides and make both sides thirty-five. Might cost us ten or twelve thousand dollars, but look at the safety that it would bring, taking both sides of thirty-five.
I think your, I think Ross's suggestion was to go up there and see if he wanted to give it to the village so he could quit paying taxes on it.
Because it's.
He can't farm it.
I guess my question is, I mean, is that something we can move forward with pretty soon, you know, pretty quick, however, so that that can be.
So we could make the same speed on, make it same on both sides of the road?
Right. Because I don't think the county's going to change it.
The county is not going to change it. They made that quite clear to me. They would rather us spend fifty thousand dollars in turn, like bringing the two turn lanes up to code as opposed to putting up another fifty-dollar sign.
But I mean.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just sick of the common sense is gone when I'm dealing with engineers, dealing with.
You almost said lawyers.
He didn't even come close to that, Ross. I am offended. I'm going home.
Is that something that John Gross would approach?
Yeah, yeah. I, I can, I'd say something to John, see if he wants, see if he wants to reach out and see if he's even interested.
I'll talk to Earl again.
Or you've got a relationship, if you want to talk to him.
We graduated from school.
There you go.
See, see what it would cost.
I talked to him ten years ago.
I mean, ten thousand dollars versus somebody's life isn't, isn't much.
A ten-foot. Okay. And I think Susan was going to try and get me that meeting after the first of the year. So I'll let you know when I hear back from ODOT on that. But we are definitely, and I, I'd said, as opposed to spending fifteen thousand for, for a survey, I'd rather put the guardrail up. At least I know I'm getting something for my money.
Right.
If we, if we get to that point, yeah.
Let me get him in, man. That's so ridiculous.
And like I said, Bloomfield said, they told him, he stood a fifteen percent chance of getting it lowered. And they're trying to lower it between, you, where it drops to fifty now, seven fifty-two, seven fifty-two, and to where it drops to thirty-five in front of, right now, that's fifty. And they're trying to get it, actually, they're wanting it to go to forty, forty or thirty-five up there. And they was told now, chances are that's not going to happen.
Forty's not in the book.
Yeah, forty's not in the book. So they'd have to be looking at thirty-five.
New section of forty-five eleven twenty-one to do that.
Yeah, so anyway.
Is there any additional business?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Section two twenty-eight fourteen, where it deals with the mayor's salary benefits. Can we change that to where the five percent salary comes out for the automatic increase? Do we have to redo that legislation?
What are you saying? There's a statute?
Yeah, statute, it says that the mayor gets a five percent increase every year. And there's no limit to it. It's not per term. And can, I mean, do we have to rewrite that to remove that?
A stop date or something?
It resets every term or?
Now, you, I, I'd have to look at it to be able to opine on it.
Okay. It just, it just says his salary's twenty-five thousand, and he gets a five percent a year raise.
I would think that just the same way as, as raising a salary, that it wouldn't be affected until next term anyway.
Yeah, but if we have a multiple term, I mean, the mayor can end up making.
I know, but I guess what I'm saying is, is that we're in the first year of Allen's.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not going to affect.
I don't mean for him. Yeah. The rest of his, he'd get five percent. But in the future.
Yeah, it's, I, I kind of, I disagreed when council passed that, to be quite honest.
It passed unanimously. I went back and looked at the.
I, I know. And I, I, Bill, I can get you a copy of the legislation or whatever. Council passed that.
I mean, it'd just be.
Three years ago, two years ago or something.
Damn, I'd have to look at.
Yeah, that just seemed kind of.
And then two thirty point zero one deals with the village administrator. Are we at the time to where we need to move that from part-time to full-time? When I was on the phone with John, he said, you know, maybe now's the time. That discussion needs to be had. And it's set by ordinance, and then the mayor appoints. So, I mean, does council feel like we just need to change that from part-time to full-time to the administrator?
We need to, we need to discuss what would the salary be, and who do we have that's interested? Because I know John would, that would, John has nothing to do with full-time. He, he, John's already retired a couple of times. And, and he, he likes his family time. So I, I, you know, if, if that's, I mean, that's, that's.
I just feel like we're asking him to do a whole lot for not enough money.
Well, well, I'm not.
Is he committed? Does he?
But not, he can't get to everything. There were things that were asked, but he just can't get to. And when I was on the phone with him, I asked, he said, well, maybe it is the time to start having that discussion. So, I mean, it's not something we got to bring up, right? But I think it's something we need to start thinking about.
I think that's going to be coming into play when we go looking at doing a, what with, as far as trying to bring another person in the office, whether it be a court clerk, utility clerk, whatever.
Yeah.
I, I see it coming. And, you know, unfortunately, I, I honestly feel we're in, we're right in that middle stage. We're too small to be big, too big to be small.
It's my life.
You know, it's, that's, that's exactly where we're at.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
We're, we're just, we're just there. We're, you know, the people we have are putting in extra hours to make things work.
And I don't know that that, I mean, I get it, that they, that, but I don't think that's fair. So, I mean, is this something we need to?
Put a part-time person in, train them?
Well, I don't know if we can do that because of the, because of the higher vice code saying exactly what we can, can't do, and the responsibility. I don't know that would fit. I thought about that.
It's where, where you're dealing with, there's going to be very little training going on. I mean, a lot of John's work he does out of his house. A lot of his stuff is making phone calls. I mean, he's on the phone, sending emails, re, he reviews stuff at home, everything else. And he comes down here a few days a week, and he's like, he doesn't like, he comes down and reports to the office. He's out there for meetings, or every time we have a meeting, he's down here or whatever.
I mean, because he's very limited by code, how much he should be compensated for. And I just, I, I think you're right.
I don't know that he's really limited on what he can be compensated for. Now, you, you've, you've got a village administrator sitting in Bloomfield making a hundred thousand dollars a year.
In our code, I think it's, he can get up, I think it's thirty dollars an hour, but I think there was a limit on how many hours he can. I could be wrong. I read a bunch.
He is, he is, no, he's, he's now paid salary.
But you guys do set this salary about.
Okay.
And that's, and that's something I didn't have on the sheet.
But it's probably just outdated. Yeah, I mean, so, and then the other one, no offense, but we're spending well over a hundred thousand dollars on an attorney. Are we at the point that we need to hire our own attorney? And have a full-time attorney that's here all the time, can be in on those meetings, can answer TIF questions right away? Because the bill's spread amongst us and however many other communities for that amount of money.
You mean, we're not your only client?
What?
I mean, we're, we're there, where we're paying for a full-time person, but we're not contracted for full-time services.
You're, yeah, I mean, you're, you're still paying, how much a year are you paying in special counsel fees?
Oh.
But it's all regarding the TIFs and the CRAs and those agreements, and getting everything cleaned up from the Kate Nova tip, as well as working on Project Cosmos tips and CRAs and, yes.
I mean, if you were to, to bring someone in, even at what you were paying, then it's more, which should be ninety-six thousand dollars a year, you'd be paying twenty percent on top of that.
Yep.
You'd have someone that would have to call me or someone in a firm like, like me to answer questions. You're not at that stage. When you become a city, you'll need a full-time law director. But right now, you're, you're still, you're in a free spot where you, you still need special counsel on certain issues. You still need counsel on real estate issues. You need someone to do mayor's court. You need someone to come to your meetings. You need someone to advise Alan. You need someone to advise Wendy on public records requests. You need someone to work with Fala on the court stuff. You know, if you think you can find someone, by all means, let yourself out.
I mean, when I saw the numbers, when I saw the numbers, I thought, man, we got to be close to be able to fit somebody, but.
It's, a lot of it is, when we hire special counsel to do.
Yeah, it was like twenty-eight thousand dollars.
TIF worker and stuff, it's, it gets expensive. The only thing we charge extra for is litigation outside of the criminal spot and for real estate matters, where we've got to bring in a real estate lawyer. But you're getting, trust me, you're getting good value for your money.
Yep.
And I, I mean, I, I know what, we, we do about twenty different jurisdictions in the state, and you are one of the lowest on a monthly retention basis. So, and you get to hang out with me. Love it. Love it.
So on that note, definitely going to somebody else.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
When I was looking at the numbers for the budget, I thought, man, that's got to be real close to the.
Yeah, we, we, we do. And like you said, we, we've, we're doing, we're hiring outside counsel. Like, we've used Caleb Bell for get, cleaning up the TIF stuff and everything. And a lot of that is hopefully one-time shot. We get through it and we're done with it. But we, it just seems like we've been hitting a lot of that stuff. And with the TIFs, Wendy and I were sitting there going through all the TIF stuff again today, trying to get the payments all straightened around and how we're going to do it and set up everything. I think, I think we finally got it pretty much figured out.
Or maybe it's time that we do what Gross said he does and just don't do TIFs anymore.
Oh, now's the fine time. We only got twenty-nine more years.
Maybe we work through one more.
Well, and, and you know, and, and that's, that's the whole thing. We've got a lot of this stuff, and we are learning and from what we're finding out. Wendy probably has more TIF knowledge. And when you got people calling from other places around the state asking questions, how do we, how does this work?
Oh, great. There's another three bucks.
But, you know, and it's like, and we tell them, and we tell them, we're not, we're not lawyers, but this is what we do.
One of the reasons that your legal bills are so low is because of those two and the knowledge that they bring. You know, if I had to come down here and do every public records request for Wendy, as opposed to, you know, reviewing it. Telling her what the law is and her drafting it, sending it out, you know. You could be look looking at twice as much. Now, could you have someone full time here doing that? Yes, but they, it's not a full time job. You don't, you don't have forty hours a week of legal work. Yet, right. But once again, when you become a city as opposed to a village, you'll have to have a full time law director, whether you hire that service out. Or whether you appoint someone, stay here full time.
When you become a city, is that an elected spot or is that?
Is there anything else in the additional business?
I got one item, Belshazzar Street. You had contacted Susan. So, right now, that project is on hold, and I guess we need to figure out, are we changing the project or not?
Well, I I had come to you and mentioned.
And parking spaces or whatever. And I, and I just figured, and I told Susan the other day, after she said you'd called her and said something, it's like. Are we, I mean, we've already kind of gave her the go ahead, and then I told her, stop until council makes a full decision. Which way they wanna go with that.
I just think if we redo it the way it is now, it's not gonna be a benefit. I think as busy as the downtown area is, sometimes that we need more spaces, more parking spaces. And um, you know, and I I know that you and I talked, Mary, and you and I talked, Eric. About the one way in, one way out to make things kind of flow better. So, it was just, I didn't know when. It was officially starting, so I meant to talk to Susan, bring it out before, and I just kept forgetting, so I was thinking of it, I emailed her. So, I mean, I don't know, that was just kind of my idea. If we're gonna do it, let's do it to work for the future, not just for what it's been like for.
What was originally kind of talked about was basically cutting off the end of Belshazzar Street down by the post office. And just making where that parking area is now, let the parking area include the street and everything. And force everyone on Belshazzar to turn up closer by the flagpoles over to Front Street. And and Assyrian would, Assyrian would go on out. I don't, I I'm not opposed to it. I don't know the benefits or not, no benefits. It doesn't really matter to me one way or the other, but. If you want something like that done, it has to be decided, because that's where we're sitting now.
Hey, if we don't think for the future.
Most should do it, Jim.
Then what?
I guess you are.
No, Russ, I'm not. This is my meeting, and I'm not finished discussing it. The mayor brought something up in additional comments. And if we wanted to discuss it more, this is what this time is. If you're unhappy with Belshazzar, tell us your opinion on it. I mean, if there's something, you're obviously upset about it. My thing is, you know, we have events down there now. Um, I mean, you walked by the Christmas event, you saw how many people were down there. You've been the food trucks and other things like that. The parking is needed. We now have other businesses coming in down there. We have a salon. Among other things that need parking, and I just think if we're going to do something. Let's do it right the first time, so we're not going back ten years later. Oh, well, this is how we should have done it to begin with. And I think the one in way out was a safety issue brought up by Eric. Um, I think that was your reasoning for that one.
Allowed for more parking, and then it would, we we need to designate a truck route. So the trucks aren't all over our streets. We have the ordinance for it, we just don't have signs up, but that would allow for trucks, you know, to know to go up Front Street. And try to make the Belshazzar project last longer uh in the section that's there. Cyrus would still be able to come out. You know, to the end. It really wouldn't affect anybody accessing the commercial properties. But, I mean, Ross, that was your specialty.
I I know, it was been done twice already and submitted twice already. This is round three, and we're still changing it.
Well, I wasn't involved.
But nobody, nobody was interested in it before. It's been turned down twice. Nobody was interested, and now it's. And now it's being redone, which is fine. Uh, and I didn't get the courtesy of a kiss my ass.
Okay, now we don't need that language in our meeting. That's not professional.
And I didn't, I didn't get it.
That's not professional.
I did not get the courtesy of even saying, hey, we wanna look at this again, you know, so.
Honestly, it slipped my mind. I told you that I talked to them. You're not gonna go. No, you're acting really petty right now, and I'm sorry if it did not get brought up. I actually forgot about the whole thing until Alan brought it up. But I'm not gonna get into a shouting drama match with you. You can take your fit if you want. If you guys wanna continue with the Belshazzar project how it is, let's do it. But ten, twenty years from now, when it needs redone again. You know, sometimes we don't always think of things on the tip of our tongue like others. You know, sometimes I, you have to go home and you have to think about it. Uh, of what you foresee things being. You know, you haven't, that's the first event that I know that you've ever been to, so you've never experienced. The the crowds that we have down there from these community events. So, maybe you wouldn't understand why that would be in it. But if everybody wants to keep it how it is and just just redo how it was before, that's fine with me. I just.
I just, like I said, I told Su- after Susan told me she'd gotten an email from you.
And I meant to have you put it on the cow. I really did.
And she she came and said something to me, and I said, stop, I know you've started, they've done boring. They they've done their test bores. And and they've done surveying. I told her, I said, stop, try to get an answer from council. Either we're moving ahead with what we've got, if councils want to change it, whichever way you guys wanna go, but. If we was changing, it should have been done before Susan put in her bid. That's all I can say.
You're right.
So, I just need, I need an answer.
You've got some.
Well, you know what? You obviously got very upset about that idea, so I'm going to retreat now, and let's just do it how it's been. And just move on.
I'm not gonna retreat. Healthy discussion to make sure we're spending.
Crumbling paper and stuff like that is not healthy. It's not productive. It's not professional.
I think maybe what we need to do is um get somebody to give us more ideas for Belshazzar. If there's, if there's like something else we wanna do to develop it, to get nice for the future.
With me talking to John, he wasn't even sure if it was gonna get done in twenty twenty five. So, honestly, I didn't think it was like this huge rush. You know, that's why I'm like, well, we'll, you know, we'll talk.
Right, but if we're thinking for future, I'm just saying, like, maybe, maybe somebody can give us some options for what it could look like, or what it, you know, what it could be, or what it could. You know, how many people it could hold as like a a place for center of town.
Yeah, but I I think that ship may have sailed, so.
You've you've got some good ideas. You've got some good ideas. I I I wish I, I wish I had. Had the opportunity to show you what's happened over the last six years, because some of these things are not new things. It's just. It's just that nobody was interested before, and now, you know, all of a sudden now, we've got some different, some different ways to go. And that that's fine. That that's okay, but I just, I really feel. I've been twenty six years at in in some position in this community with local government. Twenty six years. Half of my time in this community, I've spent as a as a public servant. And what I found out, when I was most recently village administrator. Is that nobody on council cares anything about what's going on behind the scene. Nobody wants to know the things that are put at risk every time something's turned down. Nobody's interested in how things got where they were. And now I thought, well, you know, by being on council, at least I can answer some questions, and I I'm not given the opportunity to do that.
I apologize for that, but I I would have liked to have gotten, I mean, Alan, you do, you know, even though I do the Cal agenda, you do it. I mean, you could have said, hey. I heard you email Susan, do you wanna put this on the Cal agenda?
And I.
Like, you just.
Well, I've.
It's not, it's not.
It sounds like he's been really busy.
I for- I I forgot about it until tonight, when I was sitting there eating dinner, and I thought, crap, I was supposed to ask, I I need, cause I told Susan to stop. That's when I found out about it, was Thursday.
And it's, I mean, I'm, and I'm not, you know, I'm I'm over, I'm over the, I'm over the frustration and the anger. You know, and and I really, at this point, um, I don't really care what way it goes. I don't really care, you know. Uh, none of my input or anything has mattered for all these years. And I'm not gonna try to invade that space now, try to come up with ideas about about how things were planned out and why. But uh, no, that's, no, it it it's okay. Go ahead and, you know, do what, do what you wanna do. And and see, see as being the right thing to do, and I'm quite sure it'll be fine.
Do you have this drawn up? I mean, you said it, that some of them aren't new.
I I've got stuff from the last six years on plans for this thing, but none of them are taken into consideration. I've shared some with Susan early on. About some, my biggest, biggest issue with Susan was the drainage issue, making sure that we renegotiate, because there's eighteen inch drop from the. Center of Belshazzar down to where Lucero, if I hit, there's an eighteen inch drop there, I need to eliminate that. But my stuff was mostly engineering things. It had less to do, and and, you know, I'm looking at LED lights, streetlights. Instead of, instead of wired lights, something that, you know, the more aesthetically, they're just, there was a whole lot of stuff. But it's been going on for a lot of years, and uh.
I've never seen your plans.
Nobody has ever asked to look at anything.
How are you supposed to know you have plans if you don't tell us?
I I told in council meetings before that this is, that this is my third time going through this.
But your first time on council.
But I was village administrator there for six years before that, and twice it it didn't happen. I know, I know. So, where where are we at logistically? Have we put together a plan, put it out for bid?
There is nothing, the only thing we've done, we've, we've, council's passed legislation, and we've contracted with Susan. To start doing work, and Susan has started doing work. And so she's putting it all together, so it can go out to bid. And if there's, and like I said, when the thing came up about the changes that Susan brought up in a staff meeting, it's like, quit doing, quit working. Until I find out where we're at, because that could affect all of her bid and everything either. So, I kinda, I kinda put the brakes on it as of last Thursday, I guess, is when I said, stop. Till we, we got a meeting Monday night, we'll find out what we, what we're doing.
Can we get like a little map drawn up and stuff, so we can at least see what we're talking about?
I mean, I'm not very good at drawing, but.
We don't have to do it here, I mean, for the next.
Well, I mean, it's just simply, literally, you would come in Belshazzar, and just south of the park, it would, so Belshazzar comes in here. Okay, here's the the old post office. This would be, this would be parking. Belshazzar would end, but the turn at the, here's the park, basically the lanes of travel would go this way. So, Front Street is.
Through the all traffic going between the park and the parking area.
Right, yes.
Then Assyrian would still come out here and just go as normal. Before it could, you know, Assyrian, you could turn here, it was like, kind of like a two.
Belshazzar's closed, they're in most of the same ways, so there wouldn't be any traffic. Anytime there's an event, those two roads are closed.
But, I mean.
Sounds like it'll work.
Some of the business owners said, ask if there was any way that more parking could be added. I thought about it. I came into Alan and mentioned it. And that's just where I left it. You know, I didn't know where I, where we were in the process. If we missed it, then I would have just told him, oh, sorry, guys, you know, the project's already too far along.
Does Susan have an artist rendering?
Not yet. No, she hasn't went that far with anything, so. Like I said, she just basically, they started doing surveying and more holes.
I know there'd be one telephone board, it'd have to be, it's right there, corner hillside acre, but I don't think that'd be a big deal.
No, it wouldn't. So, you're obviously gonna have to all vote on a plan before it goes out to bid anyway, right? You're gonna have an artist rendering, you're gonna have a engineer's estimate you're gonna have.
All that before we even put it out the bid, yeah.
How far away is she from putting together?
She's just very, just, just very preliminary. Like I said, she started.
March or April was the estimated.
Her timeframe that she talked about.
Yeah, we were hoping by, we were hoping sometime early spring to to put the bid out, try to get it done in year twenty five, but.
They were hoping to start in like June or July, I think, the actual.
So, are we still early enough then that she could do this with not a ton of impact?
I think financially, we're okay. We, she hasn't spent a bunch of dollars yet, but she needs to know what this council wants on this. I mean, before she starts. And I don't know, maybe it will impact the survey a little bit. Maybe they might have to come back out and do some more surveying.
I mean, if it's not that big of an impact, and we all think it's a good idea, I don't really see a problem with going forward and saying, hey. Can at least make sure that this makes sense from an engineer's standpoint.
Looks like it should be about the same amount of dollars, you would think.
I wouldn't. Yeah, they're gonna have a little bit of parking, you know, structures and things, but.
Pretty small.
Yeah, I don't.
Probably some curb and some meters.
So, are we good then to, yeah, is there anything else in the additional business?
One, one last thing. Can we in twenty twenty five bring planning and zoning back? And what do we have to do to do that? We're all having to wear hats that is not in our wheelhouse and make decisions that's not in our wheelhouse. And I know that, you know, they could have something and something could be lost, but I just think it's another set of eyes. To have a planning and zoning committee. What what's it take to bring that back? And is there an appetite to bring it back? So that there's an independent group of people that looks at the book and looks at this before it even gets to us.
You'd have to have legislation. You'd have to have uh. Community members. You'd have to have ex officio from council. You have to have meeting minutes, public meetings, agendas.
You pretty much rewrite the zoning book too, cause they went through that the last time. When it, when it came out, Josh had to do rewrite.
Do you want planning and zoning to be the final, or do you want planning and zoning to be step one? Step one, three, three step process whereby they appeal to you, and then if they're unhappy with your decision, they appeal to the court. It'd take you about a year to get there, and you'd have to get. Probably five community volunteers to sit on said board, uh, minimum of three.
We've had three come and speak and say they would love to be a part of it.
Yeah, well.
As long as we had people that had experience, I mean, you know, we don't want just another one of us on there that doesn't, you know.
Well, I think, I think that was the problem, the council, when they removed it, it's like you have six people sitting there. You gotta figure, you've got a two hundred and fifty, three hundred page zoning code book. It's not, it's it's not that, no, it's not that way outdated. It's actually very updated. And.
Very manageable.
The the problem, the biggest problem they had in the past was the developers come in, and they spend six months going through. The zoning board. Once they got it figured out, then they come to council, and council just throw it all away and wants something completely different.
If you wanna be the final say, I wouldn't recommend having a board. If you don't wanna be the final say, then I would delegate it all to the board, and I would say, if you wanna appeal to the board's decision, you go right to court. But if you wanna be the final say on development in your community, then in essence, you are the decision maker.
And that's where a lot of it came into play, because they weren't, the zoning board was not the final say. Every, they, the zoning board didn't do anything but meet with developers and go through all that and make a recommendation to council. Council got to where they were just kind of blowing off most of the recommendations.
You get the people that are on your, your planning and zoning commission, and they say, I worked six months on this, and council overturned it in one.
One reading, one setting.
Right, one setting, yep, I quit.
And you gotta figure.
Two people, and you gotta get a third person in to get it.
Well, we we were sitting with six people, I believe there were six or seven of us on there, and and you sit there, you gotta figure, you had six people. Who was supposed to know this book inside and out, and they've never been served on council, they've never served in government. And they're supposed to know all this and make decisions, and the six of you sitting here probably haven't even looked at the book. Those people were getting, were not getting paid a nickel. You guys are getting paid and probably haven't read two hundred and.
Twenty four.
Two hundred and twenty four pages. You, all of you sitting here around the table are involved in government. We had people sitting there, never been in government, never went to a council meeting, and they're sitting there, unelected people making decisions.
You did a really nice job with that mine.
I I only bring it up because we've had several community members ask for it. Council members in meetings have said it would be great to have. We don't bring it up and talk about it, then I don't feel like we're doing what we should for the.
Oh, yeah, it's, I mean, it's council decision.
If if, is anybody else, you know, wanna move forward with it, or is it just something we wanna continue to do, do what we're doing?
I mean, it's, it sounds like a good idea in theory, but after hearing what you just said about like, it's it's the people who haven't even read the book, and they're sitting around a table. And they know even less than we do, then I I guess what's the point?
You're all pretty intimately involved with the decisions on the development in this community, and and I don't see you ceding that power lightly.
I think that was the problem. It was a power thing before, I think, is what we're actually.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying power, I'm saying involved.
But I mean, no, it, it was a power thing.
I think what I would like to see for twenty twenty five is, you know, is for us, I know we discussed it before, and it just never happened. Is when we get these plans and we discuss them in the Cal meeting, it would be nice to have, you know, those of us that. Have their stronger suits or another ti- you know, maybe Tiffs and not zoning, you know, to have a checklist of things that. We as council members should pay attention to um, and be able to talk about it more around the table to really like. You know, cause some of those maps are so dag on tiny, I can't see them.
On larger projects, you you can also assign. Okay, this is the first one. You're number one, you're number two, you're number three, you're number four, you're number five, you're number six. First project comes in twenty twenty five, you're responsible for looking at it, reporting back to council. Second one, third one, fourth one, fifth one, sixth one. If you want someone to take a serious look at it, you guys have to work outside of these council meetings. If you want someone to take a serious look at it, you guys have to work outside of these council meetings.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I don't.
And, and if, if you want to, you know, manage that outside of, of Alan or John or, um, your zoning administrator, then I, I think that the smart thing to do would be to assign it, assign each project, okay? A new housing project, that's you. A new water project, that's you. That way someone's there getting a look at it, can report back to council and he's not, he or she is not meeting with others, talking with others, gathering votes with others. It's just, that's one person who is taking a serious look at this application. And you're all that intimately involved that one project or another will strike you.
And maybe it's the point, like if we're gonna have a big project and those developers are coming in, that whoever's assigned that could come in and meet.
Move a board, right? Then you can, you can meet with them. You can sit down with Alan and John and me and the developer and say, okay, you, you, you want a TIF, you want this, you want that. What are we getting? What do you want? Let's see what we can do. You're gonna have to present to council. I'm just one person. I can't make any decisions.
So I, I think Ross is really good in the, in the zoning. That's like his, his thing and, you know, he's showed me a couple of things of what to look for, but, but yeah, I think if had a list of what I need to look at and it, it would, it would help. I'm a, let's show me, let me do it kind of learning person.
Yeah, it's a teacher person, how to fish kind of thing.
So.
I just, I, I know something needs to change because this last one was frustrating, because I was trying to look through it while I had to look at the other ones that are coming up. I just ran out of time.
You ought to see, you ought to see things when we were busy. Yeah, yeah, right now, you're just coasting, man. This is a piece of cake. This is nothing. This is nothing.
And it's probably coming.
But there's all, all kinds of ways to carve up that problem.
Okay.
It's just one. I, I don't think that a, a P and Z committee is where you guys are at.
That was brought up. We discussed it. They asked us to discuss it, so now I feel like we've done our, our due diligence.
Very quickly, just, just as a reminder, the next council meeting be the first one in January and there's things that we are required to do. One of them is to pass a set of council rules. One of them is to elect a council president. What, and typically, better set the dates for council meetings. I will put together a list of dates. I will send out some council rules, which are, unless, if anyone's got any major changes they're looking at for council rules, let me know. Otherwise, it'll be just the same thing we did this year. And you can change those anytime. So if you pass it in January, you decide you want to add or change something, you're free to do it in any council meeting, I believe.
We did that this year, right, with some of the timing? Isn't that some of the council rules?
Yeah, I, I believe we did, so. And if we're looking at doing raises back, I'll change, well, that's employee guidelines, not council rules, but, but.
We have to adopt that book in January.
We have to adopt that also. So those things will be coming out. I will get those to you. I, I didn't see any major changes coming down the road with this, this stuff.
Where are we at with the magistrate raising the costs and fees?
I've taken care of that. It won't go into effect in January. We're raising court costs and not fees. Fees would have to come from the council. Court costs can just be done.
Yeah, we're sitting here having court and.
We're just discussing it with the magistrate and he said, your, your court costs are low. You should help them. Cause we only get ten dollars on a few seventy-dollar charge.
Oh, I mean, I saw the, I mean, the activity in November was, was phenomenal.
To have any other additional business?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Eric, second.
I think we already had a motion on the floor.
I'll second Ross's.
All right, all in favor. All right. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.